Good evening. Welcome to our first virtual board meeting. I hope you are all well and keeping yourselves and your family busy at home during this difficult time. If you or anyone in your family has contracted the virus, we are keeping all of you in our thoughts and prayers. I want to start by thanking our administration and teachers for all you've done to make this transition to distance learning as smooth as it could be on such short notice. We know this has not been easy for anyone. We're doing the best we can under the circumstances, and we appreciate all the positive comments from the community. We are here if you need help. Don't let distance learning or this quarantine separate us. We are available through email and will help in any way we can. When the great peace is living, we always come together in tough times. As a 28-year resident, I've seen it time and time again. Now, I will open the meeting with a flag salute and a much-needed moment of silence for all of our healthcare workers and first responders and everyone dealing with this virus. The flag. Where's the flag, Joe? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The session at Wayne Board of Education meeting, the second, was convened in a conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, and it was convened on Zoom. And the statement of compliance setting forth, location was read in accordance with our mandate, the open public meetings. All was taken. The meeting was reassessed and is now being reconvened. I am Dr. Toback. Can you hear me, Dr. Toback?
I can. Okay. So, for administrative summary report, I wanted to start my report by taking a moment to recognize all the healthcare heroes, police officers, first responders, emergency workers, volunteers, anyone else involved in responding to this crisis. We think back to just a few weeks ago, we had our last board meeting on March 12. Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Dr. Toback?
Yes.
Can you hear me, Dr. Toback?
I can hear you. Can anyone else hear me?
Yeah, I'm good. I can hear you, Mark.
Yeah, I can hear you fine.
Mark?
Yeah, I can hear you too.
I'm good. I got the wrong name, but I hear you.
I think the Chromebooks are missing.
Kathy's connection is the problem.
I'm sorry. We seem to be having a problem with the audio feed for Mrs. Kazan, so we put her on mute for the time being. I call her at this point and just let her know. And I guess, Dr. Toback, if you could continue as I do that?
Yeah, I mean, I'll do my administrative summary, okay? So, I'll just start over again. I wanted to start by thanking and taking a moment to recognize our healthcare heroes, our police officers, our first responders, our emergency workers, volunteers, anyone else involved in responding to the crisis. When you think back to just a few weeks ago, we had our last board meeting on March 12, you quickly realize just how much the world has changed. I can't. We were all living in a very different world one month ago, and that still, at that point, was a larger reflection of life DC or before coronavirus. Coronavirus has had significant and increasing presence in Wayne. We have around 200 known residents who have contracted the virus and a daily increase of about 25 cases. Sadly, two residents have passed away. These three of our school employees have also tested positive for the coronavirus, although because of the specifics of their cases, the local health department has not required a notice. The numbers are going to continue to increase well beyond where they are now in the coming weeks. There's something that every resident can do right now to help, which is stay home. If you have to go out, please keep your distance. For our students and parents, going out and playing is a very natural thing. It needs to still happen. Please make sure to maintain your social distance, especially when playing games. One of the greatest issues was reported to me from the Wayne Police Department, one concern they have, that they have been regularly breaking up groups of young people who are out there playing basketball, football, soccer, and other games, where they're in close contact with each other. So, please stay home, keep your children at home. If anything, we've learned from this, that the coronavirus spreads in unexpected ways. We learned from discussing with our county and local office of emergency management, that there is a gap in the availability of personal protective gear. Most of the protective gear from the state and federal sources is currently being used and going to hospitals. Because of an inability to order these protective supplies, the people at greatest risk are, in many cases, our local first responders. Money can't buy everything, and masks in particular cannot be ordered at this time, which means that at the time of the anticipated height of a crisis, there will not, there will be an inability for our local first responders to restock these critical supplies. So, in response, the Board of Education is making a significant donation to the Wayne Office of Emergency Management. We'll be donating about 60 N95 masks, which are worth their weight in gold, to first responders and healthcare workers, along with 940 surgical masks, 500 pairs of goggles, and 5,000 pairs of rubber gloves, with additional donations coming as we're able to identify inventory. We also will be working to collect gloves and goggles from around the district science labs. There are some more out there. We're happy to be working with the Wayne Education Association to collect a variety of personal supplies that are being donated by the teaching staff members, as they are willing to donate what they have available on them personally. The goal is to support our local police and first responders as much as possible and fully utilize our resources to help them and the community at this time with great need. The Wayne Education Association is doing so much to provide support to the community at this time. We thank them for all they're doing and will be, will be doing in the coming weeks. Volunteers, but especially those with a medical background, are extremely valuable in any community at this moment in time. The school district is making it possible for some of our school nurses to volunteer where their expertise is needed. So, we have four of our nurses that are requesting to volunteer to help locally. The board is approving them to move on into work as a volunteer, depending on where they're needed during this crisis. In just a few short weeks, the district went from being a traditional school system to an online version of itself. And I wanted to thank all of our teachers and administrators for a tremendous effort in making some major changes to professional practices in short order in order to maintain high-quality educational programs. We have many heroes who are really rising to the occasion across the district, but all the members of our technology department have literally worked day and night for weeks now to make sure that our network is able to handle the enormous increase in usage in such a short period of time, as we're meeting the challenge of providing devices to students as we prepare for the next phase of our school shutdown. While many have been working from home, these employees have been working every day and night here in the district while also balancing their own needs at home. Joe Burchard, Suzanne Fiavante, Eric Lindorf, Scott Sledo, Bill Schmidt, and Nick Palisi. A special bit of gratitude is owed to these employees for their exceptional work and their incredible dedication to the district. The next phase of our distance learning model will start on Monday, March 13th, with a number of significant changes in response to the thought exchanges that we completed for parents and for staff members. I can't tell you how many emails we've received from parents of our special need students expressing concerns about the need for related services. This is a major issue across the country, and in New Jersey, there's relief provided through an executive order from Governor Murphy and from the Commissioner of Education that allows schools to deliver these services online as of April 1st. Once we heard the news, we immediately started to revise our plans. Related services for special need students encompasses a host of different things that sometimes you don't think about: audiology counseling, early identification and assessment of disabilities, occupational therapy, orientation mobility services, parent counseling, parent training, physical therapy, psychological services, recreational and therapeutic recreation, rehabilitation, social work, and speech-language services. The reason I mention all of these services is to help everyone fully understand the enormity of the problem and to illustrate all of the services which we were previously unable to provide, but now will be able to, at least to some extent. So, for all of our parents who have children receiving related services, we'll be working during the spring break to coordinate our district's response, its newfound opportunity. We'll be receiving an email that includes a link to a survey, and it's very important that you complete the survey so that we can start to coordinate services across the district. Another significant effort to bridge the gap in social interaction includes the use of Zoom at all grade levels. It's important to understand that Zoom is another tool among many that teachers may use to help with distance learning. Started our training this week. I know that some of our teachers have already been reaching out using Zoom. Keep in mind that Zoom may create other issues, so it's important to understand that this is not perfect, and, but to get started, you need to complete the opt-out form if you're, if you want your children to be able to interact using Zoom. If you're not interested in that, please, excuse me, complete the form. It's also important to understand that teachers will start using Zoom when they're comfortable. Many are just learning to use it, so it may take some time to acclimate. This is an important step that will aid greatly with the ability for teachers to interact with students and provide some normalcy during this difficult time. This thought exchange for parents and staff members also indicated there are many people who are truly overwhelmed, and this includes students who are adjusting to a new way of learning. First phase of our plan included the same schedule we have followed. What we learned is that the best schedule for distance learning is probably not the traditional schedule we have been following, but making some changes at all grade level. Just a reminder, for those students who currently receive free and reduced meals at school, Wayne School's food services will continue to provide pickup meals during spring break. Pickup day will be Monday, April 6, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the usual locations at Wayne Valley and Ryerson. If you're unable to pick up meals, please contact the food services office at 973-317-2239. Also, for our HIV report, I'm reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents in the Wayne Township School District. There are 18 incidents investigated since my last report. Nine of those cases were deemed to be the category of HIV. Keeping in mind, these are prior incidents that took place before the shutdown. Any incidents that are taking place either now or directly before the shutdown that were unable to be investigated will be investigated once school reopens. Last, I'd also like to thank the Board of Ed, your unwavering support for this difficult time period. You know, it's, it's not an easy time, but your support is very much appreciated.
Okay, at this point, after talking with the president, I'll just read the revisions as she tries to reconnect through another computer. So, tonight, we have revisions to the agenda. The first item will be found under V, which is Emergent School Resource Finance, and we are revising item V5, amending it to add existing, to the existing language, that the subject bill list would be sent to the finance committee and approved by the finance committee chair prior to each check distribution list. So, that'll allow the business office to move ahead with the action with review by the finance committee. So, that's the change there. The emergent is the next area we're adding to the agenda, which is X, emergent resource, which is legal. We have three items tonight that will be additions. The first one is approve of a settlement, and it reads, "Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hereby approves of a settlement agreement between the Wayne Township Board of Education and employee ID number 2678, dated March 28, 2020, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement to further implement same." The next item that's added is a resolution to permit volunteering during school hours, and it reads as follows. "Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, due to a unique need for emergency services based on the coronavirus pandemic, hereby approves employee number 1346, employee number 9909, employee number 1550, and employee number 5772 to volunteer as nursing personnel during school hours in the contravention of Board of Education policy number 3230, outside activities. This permission shall not constitute a past practice." And the final additional X, number three, will be adding a resolution to donate emergency supplies. Resolve that the Board of Education authorize its superintendent to make emergency supply donations to various agencies, as discussed in executive session. That concludes my report as far as the revisions to the board agenda, and I will check to see where we stand with the Board President.
Can you hear me? Well, that's not good.
Yes, 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 yes.
Unbelievable. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
You can hear me now.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Sorry, I'm trying to mute it, but I can't find it on this computer. You have my audio? Oh, you have my audio, not video. Okay.
Maybe she's echoing because she has two screens open.
Possible.
I don't have to open.
We see white in the meeting, so I don't know if you fully logged out of the last session
Okay, at this stage, after talking with Mr. Burchard and Mrs. Kazan, she's currently having technical difficulties, as we've seen. He's going to reach out, Mr. Burchard, to try to resolve them, but she has authorized me to move the meeting forward if I could do that while we tend to, Mrs. Kazan. We will now move to the public comments, and I'm going to ask Mr. Burchard to help. While we're trying to get Mr. Burchard, I would like to ask, or at least advise, the general public that is listening tonight, that you will have the ability to raise your hands virtually on the, on your Zoom feature. So, what we'll do is we'll try to identify you the best we can in order as received or as identified, and we will move through that, that section. So, if you could, please stand by. Okay, so at this stage, we do not see any hands up. I do see Mrs. Kazan trying to get through, but if you can, from the general public, I guess if I can have a motion to open the general section, the general question, I should say, general comments on agenda items only.
Mr. Moffett, I'll move that.
I'll second.
Mr. Pavlak, move it.
Okay, moved by Mr. Pavlak. Oh, my God.
Mr. Pavlak, and I had Mr. Duffy seconded. Okay, so this is the stage where we'll try again. Anyone that's called in and is currently online, if you could please raise your virtual hand, and we can identify you to speak. So, that's a little area. If you're looking at Zoom and you have it on with, or sit, or participant section, you should just be able to have a raise hand button. Because at this point, we see no one with their hands raised.
Mr. Moffett, I would move to close public session.
There's a hand raised.
Mr. Pavlak.
There are actually two.
Yeah, they're hand raised, by the way.
Okay, I can't see that.
Yeah.
Can I withdraw my motion?
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Moffett, can you talk to Mr. Burchard so I can be unmuted?
Okay, Mr. Burchard, are you enabling the individuals that have other hands raised?
Yes, we just recognized Melissa O is able to speak.
She has to unmute.
Just unmute.
It's not allowed. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm sorry. I just thought I was supposed to raise my hand for like, to show that I'm here, but I don't really have anything to say. I'm confused, I'm sorry.
We're all getting through.
I'm so weak.
Mr. Burchard, do we have a second individual?
Just allowed Carol Martins to speak.
I think she also has to unmute herself, if I see the screen correctly. I think, Mr. Burchard, we should, oh, I think, Mrs. Martins?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Oh, we can hear you now. What is it? You would like to address the board on the agenda item?
No, nothing right now.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam President, if there's no one else that I can see, who wishes to...
It looks like there may be one more, Don. Mr. Pavlak, I think we have one more. Joe, is there one more?
There's one more. However, I don't see a, a name. It's up to you to, to allow them to speak. It's G E N A T.
They would need to state their name.
Okay, I'll unmute them, and they can state their name.
Thank you.
They're unmuted?
Yes, Gina Hakim. Did you hear me?
Yes, we did. And your address, please.
886 Valley Roads, Wayne.
And what agenda item would you like to address and comment to the board?
Nothing for now.
Okay, thank, as the last speaker.
If there's no one else, I move to close public session.
I'm speaking with Mrs. Kazan, and she would like to know if Mrs. Putup would like to take over the chair of the meeting. And if, is, or would you, would you rather try to pass it?
I would be more than happy to try to take over the chair in the meeting. However, given the format and not having the paperwork in front of me, I would be happy to defer to another member of the board who has previous president experience. It might move more smoothly. So, if Mr. Pavlak or Mrs. Albanese or Mr. Baba would like to take over at this point, that would be fine.
But yeah, Mrs. Kazan had suggested maybe Mrs. Albanese. Are you comfortable, Mrs.?
I set Mr. Pavlak seconded, Zach. Eileen, you have to unmute yourself.
Probably muted myself.
There you go.
Thank you. I can do that until Mrs. Kazan is available. Okay, so we've closed the public, we're going to move on to agenda items. So, I will look for a mover for, are we going to move the entire agenda, or do we want to move one item at a time?
Madam President, I make a motion to move the entire agenda, all items, up until X, all the way through X.
I'll second that.
Okay, so moved by Mr. Pavlak, seconded by Mr. Duffy. Are there any objections? Roll call, please, Mr. Moffett.
Okay, but you...
Mr. Moffett has to unmute. Mr. Moffett's asking for an additional minute.
Okay, she does, she's having a difficulty... Okay, she does, she's having a difficulty communicating, Mrs. Kazan, she still wants to participate. She was asking for discussion. If there was discussion on the motion for all to X.
Does anyone have any discussion?
What would you like to? I think it's Mrs. Kazan.
Kathy wants one.
Yes. During Mrs. Kazan's transition and trying to get back into the meeting, she did not hear the revisions. So I clarified revisions with her and stated that I did read in an amendment on item that was discussed in the Finance Committee, which was V five, which was amended include language that the bill's list moving forward in this emergency situation would be reviewed, sent to the Finance Committee and approved by the Finance Chair before release of the checks. So I clarified that with Mrs. Kazan. So I am back to the resolutions all through X. Motion by Mr. Pavlak, seconded by Mr. Duffy. Shall I call a roll?
Does anyone else have any additional comments or any discussion questions prior to the roll? Seeing or hearing the one, Mr. Moffett, if we could have a roll.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Baba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yeah.
It's recorded a yes. Mr. Pavlak?
Yes, and I'll abstain on all X items.
Mrs. Putup? Did we lose Mrs. Putup? I will, I will. I will, I'll mark her absent for for vote. Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan? If you would like to record as a yes. Motion carries.
Next, we're going to move to the open for the general public. This port, this portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person, and members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under old business. Can we have a mover and a second, please?
Move.
Second. For members, we need a mover. Was that Mr.? Mr., that was Mr. Giordano to move, and Mrs. Shear seconded. Mrs. Shear, thank you. Okay, Mr. Moffett, before we move to public, if you could just once again explain to members of the public how they raised their hands virtually, it might help people who want to comment during this time.
Yes, during this section of the agenda, moderator is the host, and they'll be able to identify it, so you'll be asked to raise your hand, and which is the, a blue hand that should come up in your screen. It should be on the bottom under the raised hand section or lower hand. And it will be identified, we see you as an attendee, and it will go in the attendee box, so you'll have to look on your screen for a hand which will eventually turn blue. I see someone has already indicated the desire to speak.
I unmuted Melanie Van Houten.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I don't know if you can hear me. This is Denise Van Houten, I'm talking from my daughter's computer. I am the president of all the cafeteria playground supervisors. Hi, Eileen, I see you smiling and everything.
How are you?
Hi to you, Don, and respectfully to Dr. Tobath, and to all the other members who I may or may not know. I'm responding, not in the capacity as the president of the CPAs, but because we, also, many of my colleagues are also caregivers under, under the aftercare program. And on March 31st, we received a rice letter from Paula indicating that it was very important that we watch this meeting this evening, and after some research was done, we found out that it involved the caregivers for aftercare, the K RAP teachers, and the preschool teachers. So I know that all of these ladies and some gentlemen are watching this meeting right now in an attempt to find out how, because the letter is written, that it may affect our employment going forward. So that is my question.
Thank you.
Mr. Burchard, is there anybody else in the queue?
I don't see anyone else with their hand raised.
At this point, Madam President, being no one else is in the queue to speak, I would move to close public session.
I'll second.
Mr. Pavlak, seconded by Mr. Duffy. Okay, maybe what we'll do now is we'll ask Dr. Tobach, would you like to respond to the question that was addressed from the public?
I'd be happy to address the question. The board has a difficult situation when it comes to looking for the welfare of all of our employees, and at this point, we have another phase of our shutdown that will be starting in, in April, and then ending in first of May. So during that time period, all of our employees from all bargaining units will continue to be paid through the duration. And at that point, another phase will come, and at that point, a board will make, the board will reevaluate our financial standing and our other issues. And at that point, you know, we'll go ahead with looking at what the future holds. There's no way of knowing at this point, but at this point, all employees will be made whole, all employees will continue to be paid as we have throughout this time period of shutdown.
Thank you, Doug. At this point, we'll move to the old business. Seeing no one, any new business? Any board member? I'm sorry, Mr. Pavlak, did you have a comment?
Yes, just one thing I would put to the administration. Is the administration considering any wellness weekends? It seems like what I'm hearing back from parents, we have a number of students, especially our special needs students, who are overwhelmed by this massive change in their learning environment. Is there any thought about giving some wellness weekends?
Absolutely. Right now, what we've done at the high school level is we've had a no new material day. So we're basically reviewing what we've been covering. We're going to do that again tomorrow. And so we have spring break coming, and like I said, the change in the schedule that I mentioned previously, where we have a shortened school day, so the teachers have still worked the regular day. We're also considering as far as the fact that students are overwhelmed, and that is, that is an issue that's out there, and we're looking for ways to scale back on some of the workload, because and we're all getting used to this. So I know that some students and some parents have said children are overwhelmed in a variety of different ways. So we are working on that, and certainly a wellness weekend can be part of the solution. We have some other activities and some things that we're doing that hopefully will be something we'll enjoy. I've been talking to Mr. Who's Great about having a show at each of the high schools, so a call-in show that we'd like to run, just to talk to the students here, what concerns they have, see how things are going for them. And yeah, certainly your question about a wellness weekend, that could be part of an overall strategy, because wellness, your health, it's of course incredibly important at this moment in time. So we look for suggestions and other ideas that people might have to help with the situation.
Thank you.
Mrs. Shear?
So I actually have the same question as Don. I was going to ask for, if we were going to throw in any wellness days. And you brought up a point where you said that for the high school for today and tomorrow are no more, no new workdays. However, I'm not, as a parent of a middle school and high school child, I'm not really sure how this was communicated. And I was just wondering if you could tell me, one, how it was communicated, and two, if we do this in the future, if it could be clearer, because I know as a parent and a board member, I received many phone calls within the past day or so saying, so my kid doesn't have school tomorrow, my kid doesn't have new work. I actually had to reach out to someone myself just to figure it out. So if we are going to do days like that, I didn't realize till you just said it, that this was just for high school. So I'm not sure, how are we communicating that to everybody? There was mass confusion about it, I believe.
Well, what we can do is, I could find a little bit more about that. I know it was communicated by our directors. So, well, our director of secondary education. So how exactly she went about that, can't be quite sure. Certainly, if there is confusion out there, we will look to fix that next time around, so there will not be confusion.
Okay, thank you. And then my next question is, I know that we'll be going, we're at, right after spring break, we go into the fourth marking period.
Yes.
I'm not sure if it's the day after, I'm not sure of the exact date. But if we could send a communication out about how some of these kids are going to switch classes, they're going to go into, well, they should be going into a new elective. And I'm not, I'm sure that you've all talked about this and thought about how it's going to happen. If we could just let people know possibly before spring break, how that transition will happen, because I know there's, you know, people are a little nervous about it. What's going to happen as far as their kid with the new class. Other than that, I just want everybody to stay healthy and safe.
Yeah, that's helpful feedback, thank you.
Okay, I can't see everyone. If any other board member does have a question, if you put it on mute and let me know. Okay.
Second.
Before we are finished, though, I apologize that we have technical difficulties for Mrs. Kazan. On her behalf, as well as the rest of the board, just from members of the general public, we want to clarify Dr. Tobach's statement that there are no changes to any employee status or payroll changes. We're well aware of the stress that the general public is, is under, our staff, our students, all who are involved in the Wayne School system, as well as the Wayne community. So we want to know that, we want you to know that we're aware, we're here for you, we see that. And we're doing everything we can to alleviate that. To our students, keep working hard. To our teachers, we're so grateful for everything that you've done for our students, because we know how hard you're working under very difficult circumstances. Please keep communicating, letting the administration know what works, what doesn't, let us know. But we're here for you as a support system. We want to thank our administration who are working so tirelessly under extraordinary circumstances to continue education within the school district. Again, we're here for you, we're here for support, so please let us know if there's anything that, that you need. We wish you all good health. We wish you all as less stress as possible, and to know that we're all here, we're working together. We're here for you, so please reach out if there's anything that you need or that we would be able to help you with. And Dr. Tobach, if you had anything else you wanted to address to the public who are watching tonight?
No, just, it's so important. I think we have a very strong community, and the strength of the community is shining through in a variety of different ways, and the strength of the community will carry us through days ahead, and we look to better days.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board before we look for a motion to close?
I just wanted to echo what was said during the executive sessions. Sean, you and your fellow firemen who are first responders, I want to personally thank you very much for your services. You're doing a fantastic job, keep up the good work, you're the soldiers in this war. Don?
Well, that's it, Don. Just your name recognition.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thanks, Sean. Stay safe, my friend.
Yes, you too. I'll make a motion to close.
Second.
Okay, Mr. second? Mrs. Shear, was that you? Oh, Mrs. Putup, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you very much, Kathy, and, you know, we'll get you next time. Okay, with that motion, we have the motion to close, and thank you, everyone, for tuning in tonight and staying with us through our technical difficulties. Mrs. Kazan will be back at the helm next time. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.